Good evening and welcome to the joint Town Council, School Board meeting for September 20th. If you'd all join me in rising, pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I guess we'll start with introductions first. Eileen isn't able to make it this evening and Tom Thornton has been excused. He's on business up in Maine. And Naomi?
Schoenfeld.
Schoenfeld, thank you. I should know that by now, but has well been excused. If you want to start with your members?
Thank you, and again, Board Member Schoenfeld is teaching a class tonight. She is a professor at Riviera, so she is doing her deed there. So from, and actually, all our board members are to my right. Next to Nancy Harrington is Brandy Nunez, and to her left is Board Member Cindy Gualyumi, and to her left is the Board Vice Chair, Andy Schneider.
Thank you, Shannon. And to your left is Tom Koenig and still, and Barbara Healy, Bill Boyd to her left, and Peter Albert to the other end, and Nancy Harrington on the opposite end of the table here. So, thank you. All right, comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the council and the school board, you can do so by coming up to this microphone or the table. And Shannon, we'll move on. The item's up for discussion. We'll start with number one, which has been an ongoing thing for the past almost 10 years. It's the school resource officer, council and the school board discuss the desires pertaining to the Merrimack Middle School Resource Officer due to the expiration of the grant funding. I guess we, the funding is coming to a conclusion, I think, this coming year. And we actually had a small discussion about it at our last meeting, and I think it was virtually, I think it was unanimous that the council believes that that position is a town position, a police department position, and would be utilized, would be run through our budget for personnel costs, and, but would be your resource officer. And so, I don't know if anybody on the council has anything to add to that? I don't know if you guys saw something differently also?
No, but I want to thank you for the continued collaboration that this funding provides, the district and the town. I know we have a longstanding, successful relationship. Having that SRO in place and prevention is definitely a key strategy when it comes to, when it comes to, you know, the educational and community outcomes we're both looking for.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Peter?
I just do want to comment, I support this. And my background in law enforcement and having experience as a school resource officer in, in the middle school and the high school, it's been an extremely valuable, valuable tool for the community, for the school, for the police department. I think that they've helped bridge some gaps with the kids and the police department. And I think it's just, it's worked out really well. And again, I can, I just can't say enough about the program. And I think it's also good that the officer does remain under the police department's jurisdiction or employ, but remains in the school to help out. So I think it's a great program.
Thanks, Peter. Andy?
Yeah, and I'd just like to put a shout out to the Merrimack Safeguard Organization because I've been a liaison for, what, about four or five years now? And the history goes back even further where the organization put together the proposal to get the original grant funding to get the school resource officer 10 years ago, or nine years ago now, I think, at this point. And just so folks know, there was a five-year grant that covered it, and then we had to go for renewal for additional five years. We can't go to the well again, unfortunately. And part of the constraint was, is that by, given all the work that we had done, that we had to show that the, that the community entity would continue to fund the resource officer after the expiration of the grant. So, so this is very much appreciated by myself, as well as the safeguard in general, because a lot of hard work and a lot of history went into this, and it's really good. And I agree with everything that Peter said about the value for this at the, at the middle school, just like it is at the high school as well, so.
Thank you, Andy. Anything further, Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to dovetail off from Member Schneider and Counselor Albert. Being the parent of a 16-year-old daughter who's been, who's benefited from the presence of Officer Apprentice and Officer Murray at the school, I certainly want to commend them for, for the work that they do on a daily basis, building the relationships and the trust, not just with the, with the teachers and the administrators in the school, but also the parents and the students that go there. So, we're very lucky that we have two very committed law enforcement professionals at our schools that, that have the children's safety, but also have their trust first and foremost in mind. So, I want to thank them for their continued due diligence and, and due diligence and professionalism, day in, day out, at the middle school and at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All righty, if there's nothing further, is there, is there a need to take an action on that? We're just going to run it through our budget?
Well, it seems consensus says that that's the way we're going to do it. We'll just run it through our budget like we have done in the past with Officer Apprentice, SRO apprentices salary. So that's what we'll do.
And did I hear somebody over here have something? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Merrimack Skate Park. Discussion to be held between the school board and the council to define the maintenance roles pertaining to the memorandum of understanding for the Merrimack Skate Park. The skate park has been, we've had the arrangement with the school district for the agreement with the property, and that came to a conclusion because of the tennis courts have become obsolete. We've been, Matt Casperius, our Parks and Rec Director, has been trying to figure a place where it could go, but in the meantime, we'd like to keep it on the school district property. And, and we would, while we couldn't, you know, we couldn't be the owners of it, we, I believe we'd all, we all agree to the maintenance of that property. And so, I, I didn't know, I think, you know, I'd like to hear from the school board of what the district's desires are, and hopefully we can come to, you know, some type of agreement.
Thank you. I know that we've talked about it at our board table as well, and it obviously comes up very regularly at Parks and Rec because it's directly impacting their operations and planning. To that end, I know that we really had to be very cautious based on our last joint meeting about how we discussed our ongoing relationship regarding the O'Gara Park, O'Gara Drive recreation activities. And now that's the, the lent lease agreement has expired and has been for a couple of months now. It's, it's a good time to speak. To that end, I know that, you know, long-term, we always talked about what is the goal of the town? I mean, we don't have really the answers. We have, we have quite more questions than answers right now. You know, what's the goal of the town to have a skate park on town park property versus school district property? Because, you know, that's something that, you know, I don't think we've always had a clear understanding of, of your intentions, because we knew that, you know, this was definitely, we've been, for two years, knowing it was going to go away, but we really didn't know what your thoughts were, your plans were, once there was no agreement, which obviously we're dealing with right now. So, you know, is there a long-term intention to have the skate park in a Parks and Recreation managed facility? And, you know, we are definitely making sure, as a school board, we're keeping in mind, we don't want to void in having that resource available to the youth of Merrimack. So, but, you know, as far as long-term, I don't think that was something that we were looking at or expecting to have to host on our property in the very, in the long-term. So, I'm, we're kind of interested in your thoughts.
Well, the, to actually move the current, what are they, apparatus? I don't know what they call those pieces, the different components?
Elements.
Elements, there we go. That can't be moved, from what I understand, because taking it apart, the way repairs have happened, it's piece over piece, and, and to get it apart is a virtual impossibility. So, while I don't know that we've had any deep discussion about the future, we have asked for Matthew to look for further locations, but I'm, myself, I'm seeing that what would have to happen is we'd have to actually have something similar to a Nashua one or something. I think we'd have to have a place built for it instead. And so, I haven't put in thoughts on the cost of that or any of that yet. But that's, that's the crux of the thing for.
Well, if you're looking at the costs, the Nashua skateboard cart ran up over about, I think it was $530,000. That, that's a pretty comprehensive skateboard park, if you've ever seen it. To me, I think that's kind of cost prohibitive for this town, a price like that. You know, I, I was hoping that with some of the changes I see, and I think, did they count? The, the school board members get a copy of?
Late this afternoon, we did, yes.
Okay. I know there were some things, concerns, and I was kind of hoping that that might start to address any misgivings that you have about it as a, as a board, so.
Yeah, I guess I was interested in knowing what the council's wishes were, and then, and then we would then be able to discuss it, I guess, what, what it is that would be best, you know, for the town council, or what, if you're asking for something as it relates to the skate park.
Nancy?
I'd like to ask a really blunt question, and I'm sorry, I'm known to be blunt. I need to know if the school board wants it gone. Does the school board want the town council to have the park dismantled and, and later? I don't care if it's now or later. Do you not, do you not want to have it on school property? To me personally, that's going to make a difference as to what we're going to do.
Andy?
I'm sorry, it's your meeting. Why don't you call?
He's close enough he could throw an elbow if I don't say this. Andy?
So, we as a, as a school board have not taken a formal position as an entity to answer your question. All we have is individual viewpoints, I think, which, I'll share mine right now. I, personally, I don't care whether it stays where it is or to another location. The concern I have is around the ongoing monitoring of the situation. I was, as a, as a school board member, and as a sort of a person that had a student in school at the time, when the town council made a decision to defund the monitor that was there at, during the open hours, the monitor did a couple of things. One, it made, there was a person there, a responsibility, that made sure that there was nothing that happened that was inappropriate. They also took care of opening and closing there to make sure everybody was out, and those things like that. Before, when I came here tonight, I purposely drove down O'Gara Drive. And there's signs on, on Babus Lake Road, on O'Gara Drive, on McKellin Street, says "School, School Zone Drug-Free, Alcohol-Free Zone." And we have to make sure that that is in, the integrity of that is maintained as we do this. So, in reading quickly, it's what's here, looking, the police calls are not significant. I mean, five calls a year, on, you know, on average or so, is not significant. But there are reports of people, of, of things that have happened there that maybe have not been reported. And I don't think that, I don't necessarily want it to move, but I would like to have more rigor of monitoring, whether it's video, whether it's bringing back a, a monitor to the park, something along those lines. For me personally, as one member, that would be okay with me. I don't want to get rid of the park, I don't want to take, get rid of it, but I think there needs to be more invested in the ongoing continuance of it.
We, when we, when we eliminated the position of the monitor, we had checked with all communities that had skate parks, and not one had a monitor in the place. And, and the, but the video cameras are something that I've chatted with Paul about, and that is attainable, he said. And it wouldn't be used as, to watch what's going on, it would be used to, after effect, when they cut through effects, that's what would be used, where they're going to sit and monitor.
I think the thing, the thing that, that's the most, is I understand that others don't have it, but it's sort of unique that there's a skateboard park on school property so close to an elementary school. So for me, that was the, the part. It's, because now, now that the lease, the agreement is all done, it is on school-owned, operated, managed property. And we're, you know, the current agreement that we, we reach as a board is to allow you to continue to use it, you know, and maintain it until a formal, until we have these discussions, right? So for, for that, because it's on school property, there's a higher level of rigor that we as a board, I believe, or at least me personally, believes need to be in place for that property that's on our, that function that's on our property. So that's.
Okay. Cindy?
I agree with Andy, with everything he said. You know, as far as having the cameras, I would support that. Again, of course, my, my opinion. I think there's value to having the skate park in the community. I think we are all one community, and, you know, it doesn't necessarily make sense to completely destroy something that's functional, just because it's not on the right town property. That seems kind of silly to me, to be honest. But, you know, the concerns are, that I have, would be around, you know, the safety. I don't think it needs a live person there monitoring it, that's very expensive. It's not necessarily, I think, what I would be asking for. But the cameras, they could periodically be checked. I like that it's close to the police station, right across the street. And what I would see is, you know, maybe some kind of a lease agreement that, where some of the terms might be laid out, and maybe a year, maybe we do it year to year, you know, something like that, where we could just extend it, that, this would be my thought. And again, some way to secure it during off-hours, you know, maybe a little more rigor with that. And then finally, some kind of a maintenance schedule that, you know, it's checked and maintained, so we're not in a situation like we were with this insurance thing. But all in all, I think it's a benefit to the citizens, families, the community in general, and I don't see a reason just to move it for the sake of moving it.
Yeah, I think the suggestion had been made, the Primex would annually come to inspect, and, you know, that way, our Parks and Rec Director looks at it on a regular basis, but it would be scrutinized by our liability carrier, and I, and I think that would be a very good idea. Again, monitoring, locking it daily, I don't know, I'd have to get some input from the manager to find out who might be doing that. I have no idea. I can't, I, I don't know that it would be a practical move. Paul?
It would be not beneficial for the users, because when we leave, the users during the summer still go there after business hours to skate, and on Saturdays and Sundays. And as you know, we don't have any employees of the town besides emergency personnel who are available to do that kind of thing. I just asked Captain Levac about the, what, what the police, how, how do the police patrol? And it's on the patrol of the high, the schools. When they come through at night, they, they drive through and they monitor the skate parks and things of that sort. So they, they do monitor the park at night after hours to make sure, for safety, and make sure nobody's in there. I don't believe, I think Matt could answer the question, but I don't believe we locked it. We haven't locked it, and we really haven't had too many issues with it. There's been a couple of cases of graffiti the next day, and we find those and we report them, but there hasn't been too many cases at night that the police have seen anybody in there after hours at, at night when they're going through.
Is it dawn to dusk, is it posted dawn to?
It's posted dawn to dusk. Actually, the, the hours need to be updated. That's one of the things that need to be updated, that we have to do. That was in the report. I don't think we have it on our, it does say dawn to dusk, will be monitored by Merrimack Police Department. Basically, it says there is no attendant on duty, and the town of Merrimack is not responsible for lost items or any injury or accident occurred during the use of skate park on the New Hampshire RSA 507-B colon 11. The skate park will be open daily from dawn to dusk and will be monitored by the Merrimack Police Department. In case of injury, emergency, or to report unlawful acts, call 911 or 603-424-3774. So that sign's there, but we have to put more signage up, and we know that. And that's one of the things we'll be looking at doing, putting additional signage up.
All right. I guess, well then, I'll tell you what I'm thinking, what I, I, I would like to leave it there. I think it is a good location with the police department close by. It, it definitely, in my, in my eyes, when I agreed with the skate park way back in the beginning, I believed it hits a segment of the population who may not be as involved in other youth activities, and they just, they love to skate, they love doing that. I, I know better than to do it, but, so, any maintenance, all that? The inspections annually by Primex, the regular checking it out by Parks Director is something that I would fully embrace. Video cameras that are of quality, that you can see, see items, you know, see individuals and what's happening, to use as a, as a tool, you know, when something arises. I'm, I'm definitely in favor of that. As far as running a monitor, I don't, I'm not, I'm, don't think it's, I don't believe it's necessary, and it's not something that I think I would embrace. And I guess that's kind of covers what I was thinking that I would like to say. And then in, you know, visiting annually, you know, if there's anything you want to add on it, anytime, we can easily have those discussions and, you know, I mean, it doesn't even have to be a year, it can be whatever, just make the contact. But that, that's, that's what I'm hoping for. Nancy?
I totally concur, and I do agree with your concerns. Excuse me. I understand your concerns, and I agree with your concerns about it being a school land, and I think the videos, and again, we can re-address this on a yearly basis. If, in fact, there are issues that arrive, and we have to become much more explicit, much more covering, much more than previously planned, we can make those alterations. But that'll be based upon episodes, not fears. It'll be based upon, these are happening, we have videos, okay, we have to respond to that. Okay? I do understand your fear, but I think it has to be measured, let's do it a step at a time, and respond to those.
Yes, Peter?
Paul, as far as, if we looked into costs of a camera and monitoring and so forth?
The cost of, the, the cost of the camera are, we just put some security up at transfer station, it was less than $2,500. We have a system with the police department right now, we have a vendor with the police department. I have to get with them to see if it has to be wired, or if it can be a wireless, but we have the capability, the police department is a stone's throw away. I don't see a huge cost to put a camera up. Monitoring, I, I did talk to the police chief, and, and it would be looped in, and, you know, it would be recorded. And then if something did happen, we would be able to go and look at the video and play it back.
Yeah, and I think you can make it, you know, the technology they have now, you can make it motion-sensitive, because those folks in the communications center are very busy. They're looking at a lot of different screens and listening to the radio, police and fire. But, you know, if it's motion-sensitive after hours and the screen goes on, now they know maybe somebody's there when they shouldn't be, trespassing, and then we can send a cruiser over. So, yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of having that camera there, so.
Right. We can look at all those opportun, options for the camera, to, whether motion-sensitive or just one that's just on a loop, 24-hour loop, so.
I'm sure this goes without saying, but one concern as we're talking that, that keeps coming to me is I don't want all of us to agree to revisit this on an annual basis and be reactive to certain situations that may arise. I would like a, just sort of to put it out there, that we can all agree that if there are some situations that are coming up, drug paraphernalia, things that are illegally based that are happening in a school zone, that we are not going to wait a year to address that situation, but rather be very proactive. I realize that it's on school district, but I would say this regardless of where it is, that if there's any sort of situation that we are knowingly involved in, where there is drug activity, or even drinking occurring, or anything that, you know, we deem as inappropriate behavior in that skate park, that we, we all kind of revisit this and not wait until that, whatever date it is that we agreed to in a year from now.
And I, when Cindy had suggested a year, I thought it might just be a review. I don't believe it has to be at a meeting or anything. And, and I, I agree, and I did say that I think it's just a matter of a phone call. If there's something going on, then we should know about it. It's either, you know, contact Eileen or Paul, or, you know, directly to the chief.
If you have, if you have the cameras there with the tape, and something happens, you immediately stop the investigation.
Yeah.
I totally agree. You don't say, let's wait for the year. Something happens, you contact the police, you look at the tapes, you investigate it and intervene immediately. I totally agree.
Bill?
Anecdotally, I would just say that this, that the council has been very responsive to some of the problems at the extended stay hotels. And the reason why I bring that into question is that Chief Roy came to us with the problem, she came to us with the plan, we executed that plan, we're seeing results. So that it's, while it's a different, totally different issue, it's the same, it's the same idea. I expected as soon as the problem happens, we're going to be all over it like white on rice. Seriously, I don't, I don't foresee that this is something that we're just going to shovel under the rug and shovel on the rug, and then a year from now, all of a sudden, we have this epiphany that there's a problem down the skate park. I really don't see this happening. I think the council's been very proactive as it relates to public safety issues in this community. And this is, this certainly would be another, another area that we would, again, maintain our vigilance over.
Thanks, Barbara?
Yeah, I just, I kind of have some concerns regarding the annual year-to-year discussion. I think it's good to have it, but at the same token, I think we need some clear something, guarantee from you that in a year from now, if we're still sitting here again and someone says, oh, you know what, we don't want to, we want to pull this back now, we don't want to do the skate park anymore, because we have no place to move it. So I don't want us to put money into setting up a, a video or camera system. We're definitely not going to put a monitor there, it's not in the budget, and I don't want to incur any more, you know, budget and, and expenses regarding this. But at the same token, I don't want to be, a year from now, and the board says, you know what, we have use for that land now, we don't want the skate park there anymore. So I think there has to be that as well for an understanding, that we're looking at, this is an ongoing project that the two of us are involved with.
Cindy?
So when I said year-to-year, and I think, A, for us, this is the first year, so I would want a year window, but I don't think it means that we all have to come together every year. I think you could work out an agreement that unless we give, excuse me, 60, 90 days notice, we could even have an evergreen clause, or it would automatically renew, and so that there's no surprises. But I can tell you from my, my perspective, and only mine, because again, we have not vetted this together, is that would not be my intent to make it a year. But there are some unknowns in our district right now as it relates to the school, and ultimately, around a new SAU building, and I don't want to lock us out of options until we've received now recommendations from Planning and Building Committee and some other things like that. But it would not be my intent for it to be a year, but if there are problems, I would want that out, and I'm willing to, you know, but I think the, the idea of just having to rip it apart for the sake of ripping it apart makes no sense. But I, I'm willing, from my perspective, for it to be a longer-term thing. But I, I do like the idea of having the year-to-year, as well as board members change, town council member changes, and different perspectives maybe represented than all of those that are at this table right now.
Thanks, Cindy. Shannon?
So, I would echo a lot of what Cindy says. It's, for us, we want a plan, we want to be clear about our plan, and we want collaborative communication. The goal for all of us is to serve the people of Merrimack. So that's, that's the common thread we have, but we have different responsibilities in doing so. So we'll always look out for our core responsibilities first. To that end, I think that, you know, in the past, we have not, when things have happened at the skate park, we've seen it in the news before, we knew, but that, and that's how we learned of it, is the school district, even though it's abiding three of our schools, and technically, even when we're doing a lent lease, it's our land. So I do want to make sure that when incidents do happen, that as you're, as you're investigating and everything else, you notify us of these incidents and that an investigation is happening, or these incidents and what's been resolved. I think the communication back to us on what the activ, concern, activities of concern is needs to be very timely. And I, I don't want to see it on MUR, I want to see it on my email from you. I think that's fair. When it comes to the cameras, I think that's something we've wanted since day one, since before there was even an expiration of the last agreement. So that's something that's of, of great importance to us. We do know that, and you're talking about investing in cameras, but you're always investing in cameras, so it's something that's not permanent, it's something that's... in cameras, so it's something that's not permanent, it's something that could always be moved if, let's say you decide to move a facility, then you can always take it with you. So I'm not really as worried about the cameras as you were, I think they're very portable. But to that end, I do want to see an annual review, let's see how this is working for all of us. And you're right, we probably don't want to do a, we don't see ourselves doing a change, but we want the right to do so, just like as you're leasing from a landlord, they own the property, and if they want to sell the property, you're leasing a home, they want to sell the home, then they will give you appropriate notice to be able to find a new home. We would be no different, but we understand, we are a little different in the fact that we understand a budget cycle, and we're not the type that would ever want to leave the youth of Barimac without a facility that they've come to enjoy for many, many years. And on top of that, you know, we're cognizant that the Flara family was very instrumental in getting this in place, and we want to make sure whatever we do regarding the skate park, knowing that this is a very valuable and important facility to them, that we keep them in the communication loop as well, out of respect for their gift to the town, and it's named after the late Mr. Flara. So keeping that in mind, that we want, you know, I know Mrs. Flara reached out to me and when we first had that expiration conversation going on, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, she's being, you know, that family's being kept in the loop, because it means a lot to them to have that namesake in facilities. So those are all things I think we need to keep in mind. But, you know, long-term, short-term, I think that, you know, the skate park is there and wanted and utilized, but we also want to make sure it's done with the expectations that we have and the way that we conduct our business. And then in the long-term, if there's a better opportunity for a better location for better facilities for a skate park, then that's, you know, that's on you to figure out where that is and how you're going to build it. I know that these facilities were designed with what was originally intended for indoor use, but you're maintaining them aggressively to be able to continue to use them in an outdoor facility. So, you know, we know that that's not always going to be forever, and when that time comes, we want to make sure we're vetting, we're happy to help you vet that publicly as well.
Very good. Thank you, Shannon. Bill and then Peter?
Based on the conversations that have been talked about on page two of the memorandum that Paul McCauley put together, the very bottom under section three, he bullet pointed seven questions that need to be answered. Land ownership, equipment ownership, maintenance, outline of responsibilities for both parties, timeframe for the agreement, termination provisions, and any other pertinent information that we might have. I think we've answered the land ownership question, I think we've answered the equipment ownership question, I think we've answered the maintenance question, I think we've got a general idea of what the outlined responsibilities are. I think developing a timeframe might be a matter for each legislative body to discuss collectively during their own particular session, that they can work directly, you know, through Marge, Matt, Paul, Eileen, Paul, termination provisions, you know, I agree with Council Haley, I think I'd like to see a memorandum of understanding that states certain with a little bit of longevity to it. Echoing Board Member Gualleone's point about having an evergreen clause, I think language can be created. It's not something I, I'm not expecting us to get done tonight, but there's no reason with the communication between both bodies, that something couldn't be presented for review within, I'll be generous, 60 to 90 days. You know, most of, I mean, most of the stuff, to me, most of the stuff is done, I just think narrowing down the responsibilities, termination and timeframe, you know, is, needs to be collectively agreed upon and have due deliberations done by either body. So if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I think I would move that the joint body direct, direct our own bodies to come up and begin preparations for a memorandum of understanding, provide a sample memorandum of understanding to our respective staffs, and then work off of annotated copies to develop a final document that would reflect the direction that we want to go with the skateboard park. That would be my motion, if that's a motion.
That the school board and the town council will be doing that work, or have our staff do that work for us?
Well, you know, obviously, I would probably suggest that we put it on our agenda, I can't, obviously, we can't tell Chairman Barnes and the school board what they should do, but I think for us, from a council perspective, we can agenda that item and have our own conversations regarding putting together our memorandum, hopefully the school board will put together their own memorandum, and our respective staffs can meld it and come up with some type of an annotated copy that we can work with.
Okay, should I get a second before?
Second.
Okay, motion by Council Boyd, second by Barbara. Did you want to speak more to your?
I already, I've, I've spoken.
Peter, and then did you?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I just, Bill touched upon a lot of what I wanted to say. There's a lot of folks in town who are kind of concerned where this skateboard park is going, and I'd like to give them, at the end of this meeting, some confidence. And so I would, I'd certainly vote in favor on the town council side of directing our staff to work towards a memorandum, and I'd ask if the school board would do the same tonight of their staff, and so they can start working together on it, and we can at least publicly tonight give the community some sense that we're working together and moving forward on this current plan.
And actually, if you talk about volleyball, talk about setters and spikers, so you set me up for a good spike on that. So to that end, we have another common bond, and that is our insurer, which is Primex. So when you talk about what we're looking for, I think Primex is going to give us guidance, and we can absolutely collaborate, our body, your body, and our collective insurance agent to get the right answers developed that's mutually agreeable. And I see Paul's hand up, and you probably don't know it.
I didn't know.
Okay, good.
I'm not good at this, I'm normally in a meeting.
I know, it's hard, it's a big table, I did it last time. Yeah.
Paul? I just want to echo that I've been in contact with Primex, and Primex offered, I believe, Superintendent Chaffrey and Matt have, it was copied on the email, they are willing to write the memo understanding for us. They're actually, these seven bullet points came from them. So if we can nail this out, they will be more than happy to write this memorandum of understanding for us. Because for those who don't know, in TV land, Primex is our insurance company. Both the school and the town have the same insurance company, Primex. It's a pool, we work off the same pool. So they were willing, because they know the interested parties that were both there, they will write this memorandum of understanding, because it has to go through their legal review, and their lawyer actually offered last night, late last night, to write it for us. So just wanted to throw that out there to the board to know that it's going to be, if we can get these seven bullets answered, we're good to go, they'll write it for us.
Cynda?
I was just, I mean, to expand a little bit on Council Albert's points, I mean, I'm wondering if there's something that can get us a little closer to an agreement without, you know, like, without going back and doing our memorandums of understanding, like, are there some, you know, first of all, you know, for that assurances for the public, you know, is there a way to say if there's anyone not, that doesn't think they're in agreement to pursuing a joint agreement regarding the skate park, or are there some terms that we could land on and vet together? I guess that's what I'm wondering, because I'm not feeling like, I'm feeling like coming together, there was a big advantage to discuss some of those items that we might have different agreements on. For example, the locking of the facility. You know, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can maybe discuss some of the terms that might be relevant, that might get us a little closer than going back respectively with individual memorandums. I don't know if that makes any sense, but...
It does to me, it might be scary then, right? I think, I think these seven points, if this was critical to Primex, those are what we should actually discuss right now, because that might do exactly what you're looking for. And I agree, I'd rather not back and forth, take it three months to do it all.
But in fairness, Mr. Chairman, and this was going to be my point, the, you know, memorandum of understanding said specific language, okay? And I'd like to have, you know, a working set of language to start off with, so that we're both, both the school board and the town council suffering on the same playing field. So I'm not, I agree with where Member Gualleone was going, okay, but I just, I think there needs to be initial foundation for us to start with, for us to build upon. I think it's noble to try and crank out some of the language here tonight. I mean, whether or not that's feasible is a different story, I think there's probably a couple of things we could do, but for some of the more, you know, termination, you know, some of the more, arch, archaic is the right word, some of the more nuanced parts of the agreement, I think, I just would like to see how, for me personally, when I'm looking at, I would like to see how it is.
And I appreciate what you're saying and agree with that, but I think these seven points are bold, broad points that would be easily answered. I think you went through a few of them right out of the gate.
So timeframe of the agreement, you want, purposes of discussion, five years?
Well, okay.
Five years.
I was thinking, as, when they said, "We want it off," that's when I would take it off, that was just me. And I can't imagine, it won't be next year, I'm pretty confident.
No, but I think people in the community need to have a certain level of certainty to echo Council Haley's point. If the town council's going to expend X amount of dollars in capital to do the necessary repairs, which I support, I've walked the skateboard park a couple of times, I know it needs to be over there, and Primex, I think, does a great job of illustrating that particular point, then there needs to be a commitment that if the town council's going to step up and make the repairs, then there needs to be some assurance that, you know, we're not ripping it up next year, or two years down the road, which is why I think I'd like to start at five years for the purposes of discussion.
And I'm just going to, real quickly, just point out, I apologize for jumping in the middle, that the, over the past five years, it's $9,500. So I don't think the investment is that great to have to lock in, but if everybody's like, "Five years," I'm good with five years, but I just don't think it's necessary. The, you know, the cameras at $2,500 roughly, maybe, who knows, a little bit more, a little bit less.
Could be more than that.
Okay, $5,000, and then we had, we had $2,000 a year, so I don't, I don't see it as a big, you know, thing.
I'm not saying that it is, but an investment is an investment, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm sorry, I don't know who was...
Randy.
I guess one thing that I keep coming back to, from a school board position, my biggest thing is safety of our children. And I appreciate where we're all trying to come up collaboratively, you know, and create a great program, long-term thoughts, we're looking at budgets, there's all sorts of different elements that go into the placement of the skate park. And I guess from my perspective, I would like some understanding of what happens if we have this agreement based on, you know, several entities of coming together and we are all, from Primex to budget, we're all in agreement. Is there anything that would cause that agreement to be null and void? For instance, if we all agree that five years is our term, if we are consistently seeing drug activity on our school property within the skate park, does that make the agreement null and void? Do we, what in that situation would happen? Because I would be the first one that would raise my hand and say, "No." I personally, and I would hope that council members would agree, that you wouldn't want that for our children on school property. So my question for all of us to answer, these bullets are great for me, but I guess we're the blunt side, I'm going to flat-out ask, what, at what point do we decide that our agreement is null and void? Because I will be the first one to say I want out if there's drug activity consistently on that property.
And those are the nuances, what do you mean consistently? Those are the definition of terms that we'd all have to agree on. And that can't be done here, in my personal opinion. I think we have a framework by Primex we should take advantage of, but I think there should be maybe a member from each group who meets, who talks about the possibilities, goes back to their collective boards, councils, and says, "All right, here's a question, how do we want it as a group?" There're going to have to be some negotiations back and forth, but we have to focus on how we do that. So I don't disagree with you, and I think all of the issues brought up are all legitimate, and all have to be somehow demonstrated in the agreement using the Primex as the framework, because it's not going to happen tonight, in my personal opinion.
And I'm not assigning your people or mine right now, but we do have two people who are at this table on Parks and Rec representing their respective bodies, who may be the ties that bind for this, because they obviously have the Parks and Rec position in mind, and they're, you know, obviously, the governing body in mind. So Brandy's actually ours, I know Peter, you are Parks and Rec, I'm the alternate for Parks and Rec, but definitely no longer the primary, my short stint's over. But to that end, we do have representation that has an understanding of what's going on at that park as well, so it might be the right choice, but I'm not delegating here, so, just a brainstorm. To the point that Bill was making, five years, I prefer two, with two-year renewals. So again, when you're doing your evergreening, that you're renewing, you know, for two years, and that gives us time every couple of years to sit down and talk about it. You know, how are the facilities, how is the activity, you know, what has security found, how have you been using it? You know, what is the school district finding, you know, what our school district needs? Because you're right, you know, and by the way, I would also say the $2,500, I think the transfer station had a number of cameras put in for that $2,500. Was it just one?
We just had another one added, it was $1,250 to our system.
Yep, so?
So, but that was, that's not as far as where we're going right now from the police station, so...
Understood. So, and then there's sometimes wireless options, so you never know. But with that option, you know, we definitely want to make sure that, you know, I think that gives us the time to continue to talk about it. Because the other thing that you have, again, you know, going back to an earlier comment I made, is we are using something designed for indoor use in an outdoor environment, so that gives us the opportunity to say, well, at what point does it get end of life, and what are we going to do about those kind of things long-term?
The indoor equipment was replaced in 2002. That equipment that's out there is outdoor equipment. That's why we're using SkateLight and what we have. The indoor equipment was replaced in 2002.
Oh, good, thank you.
And then, did you have to go, Shannon?
Well, I would say then, if we go back to our respective boards and work through a process like Nancy Harrington suggested, which I'm all for, that I think we owe at least the public a date by which, you know, we will shoot to resolve this, so it doesn't go on and on and on, so that it puts some accountability on both of our bodies to be able to resolve this and try to get out of what I could call no man's land.
If we could have that added to the motion as a friendly amendment, that would be worthwhile. But in the meantime, did you?
No, I was just going to say in an earlier board meeting, once the sun set, we actually said, unless given reason not to, based on the feedback we got from the town council, or the town on maintenance that's being addressed, that we'll keep it open for the rest of the season as is, so if we did make it, we could make it for the opening of the next season, because I believe it's going to end in October anyway. So I think we're still in a good place to spend a lot of time to get a good MOU in place before it reopens in the spring.
Peter?
So there's still a motion on the town council side?
Yeah, and Cynda was looking for a date certain, and Shannon just pointed out...
I'll amend the motion to November 8th, which is our town council meeting, and I think for the school board, it is, correct me if I'm wrong, it's either the 5th or the 12th of November?
We're supposed to do it Monday, so...
That's right, so it'd be the 5th. Or you could do the 19th, they could do the 19th, however they want to. Actually, you know what, make it, make it November 19th for the school board, because we'll have, we'll have a bite at the apple, they'll have one last bite at their meeting, if they so choose.
Paul?
Our meetings are the 1st and 15th of November.
That's right. Thanksgiving and Christmas is...
But I said November 19th, which is their meeting.
Covers it anyhow.
Covers it anyway.
Yep. Okay. Set it, amend it, will everybody, everybody understand the motion?
Repeat the motion.
She doesn't speak her purpose, Bill, I'm convinced.
I understand, I think the intent, I understand.
Did you want to?
The motion was for, to work off of the Primex memorandum of understanding that the school board and the town councils...
How about designate a person?
Well, okay, that the school board and the town council will use their deliberative times over the next six weeks to hash through, that coordination will be done through the respective staffs, that a designee will be appointed by each specific legislative body to coordinate with each other, communicate with each other, to make sure lines are maintained with the goal of hopefully having a final document done by November 19th, which is the third, the second, excuse me, the second meeting of the school board for that month.
And does the second agree with that summary?
Yes.
Oh, I thought Peter's second, I had the wrong name down here. All right. Okay, are we all clear now?
Yes, thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Wait, one, two, three, four, five.
Twelve.
Ten?
Ten.
Ten, zero, zero.
Thank you.
I could've taken the subtraction, it probably would've been quicker, right? So, all right, uh, next item on the agenda, yes, sir?
Before you move forward, can I just ask a relatively blunt question?
Since we're being blunt?
Since, since the motion came up and, and made some definitive effort to go forward, I still don't think I understand what's changed, except for the fact that the lease terminated. Um, between the beginning of the summer and, and now, it seems like the school board's got a, a, almost fear of, uh, safety of the kids in these, in the surrounding buildings. Was that there all along because there was a school, a skate park on school property? Or has something changed now that, that is not blatantly obvious?
Nothing has changed. It's a concern that the board has had all along. And as I mentioned with the loss of the monitor, it became more relevant to us. I believe it are, one of our previous joint meetings, we put concerns in, in place in front of us around the monitoring of what was going on, and nothing was really done. But we were also a little handcuffed because of the agreement that was there between, between the bodies. So in many cases, we could not proactively discuss with you any actions until the agreement was ceased, which is July thirtieth, which is why we wanted to plan this meeting so we could have these conversations. So I think for myself, and I think for the board, we raised concerns with this.
Four years ago?
For four, four, five years ago.
Yep, and, and to that end, now it's, now that we're the owners of the land underneath the elements, and we don't have a memo, memo of understanding, we now have liability that's kind of foggy. And, and Primex also had concerns that we have this liability as the landowners with no, uh, lens lease agreement in place to, to define responsibilities. So this MOU is imperative to the long-term, um, operation of, of it, because we're now exposed, because there is no definition of, of who's responsible, you know, if someone gets hurt on the land. So it could be you, it could be us, it could be both. So, and that's, that's why we had to take a very proactive move to, uh, find out what our exposure was. And we had Primex in our meeting a few, uh, about six weeks ago.
So if I can, if I can ask, um, one of the questions in here is, is ownership of the land, and the assumption is that the school district wants to maintain it. I haven't heard anything clearly tonight as to exactly where you wanna go. Do you wanna lease it back to the town and let the town manage and own the property still? Do you wanna keep the land and, and quote unquote?
We can't do that, Tom. Sorry for the interruption, uh, because.
I disagree with you, a hundred percent.
Okay, that's what I've been told, and I'm not the professional in that line.
We can do anything we want now that that lease is done and gone.
I agree with Tom. I've held that contention.
There's nothing to stop us from.
I've held that contention the entire time.
I'm in agreement with Finley. That was my understanding that we could not get into it either.
But that, that was the opinion of the town manager, and I.
What I'd rather do is, um, if we, I'd rather have those conversations when we're going over our individual things moving forward.
Okay. I, I think there's a lot of questions we don't know, and we're gonna end up throwing the ball back and forth to try and get those answers.
We might, but I'd, I, we.
That's fine.
In, you know, in conjunction with each of our bodies talking to the, uh, Primex and getting those bases covered, um, I'm hoping that it doesn't turn into that, but I, I can imagine it could. But, uh, that's what I, I, if you don't mind, that's what I'd like to do. Peter.
You know, what I'm hearing tonight is, I mean, we've, we all seem to be in agreement. There's some things that we're not necessarily, there's the, uh, dotting your i's and crossing your t's, and we've gotta get together and communicate that, and we've set a timeline. I think we've told the community, hey, look, we're, we're still, we don't wanna see the skateboard park go away right now. And I think that's important.
That's right.
The other thing brought up by Board Member Nunez about the drug activity, um, you know, I'm looking at the police statistics down here, and I know that police don't see everything that goes on. I'm not, I'm not naive to that. Um, but I think what we need to do is communicate. Um, and if, you know, folks are coming up to school board members, or, or, or school staff, or police, or anybody else, um, and there is a concern, then we have to be proactive. I agree, a hundred percent. Um, but there's a lot of communication, because sometimes, you know, we don't find out till later. Somebody said, well, somebody told me, but I didn't wanna say anything. It's, it's, if there's an issue, we need to talk about it, and when people come forward with information, we need to discuss it with the police and be proactive on that issue. Because that concerns me. If it's really that bad over there, then let's give it the attention it deserves, so.
Thanks, Peter. Paul?
The repairs have been done.
Right.
We are just waiting on the okay to unlock the gates and open the skate park again. Is that, is that a? Is that, uh, is that what the school would like us to do, is open the gates?
Maybe.
Well, I have a, I have a question first. You think it's locked right now?
I was just informed that it wasn't. It was as of three o'clock today.
Because when I drove, because I drove down O'Garey Drive just to look for the drug-free zone signs and stuff, there are people in the skate park tonight at about six-thirty, six forty.
Okay, so it was, oh, they, they finished the repairs today, they must unlock the gate.
Okay.
We can very easily go back and re-lock the gate.
Is it okay to leave it open?
No, no, I'm, I'm just curious.
Is it okay to leave it open?
So obviously, there was a difference of communication, whatever, that's fine.
Is it okay to leave it open?
I, based on what we've.
We voted at a board meeting that, you know, with the repairs, that we are comfortable just leaving it open and allowing until, for, until we can meet as a board, which we're doing, to come up with a plan, which we're doing, to, uh, to have a long-term strategy. So yes, so that was, that was our intention at our board meeting six weeks ago, that because you were taking proactive steps, and even before you made those commitments, that we would, once we had a plan in place that, you know, we'll keep it going, but we'll start working with you right away to see, see what needs to be done. And the first thing we did was share the Primex report with you. And the fir-, the second thing you did was do it. So that's exactly what we were looking for. Your responsiveness is greatly appreciated. If we weren't clear enough earlier in our deliberations about this. And, uh, we expect that, that the resources used for the, for the youth as soon as it's available.
So just to be clear, I, I think that, to, to share what Peter said, we're all on the same page. We wanna do, we wanna keep it open. We all have different concerns about nuances, which the memo of understanding we'll get to. I think we all learned a lot about the last lease agreement that we had with the property, things that worked well, things that didn't work well. Um, so I think we're all gonna take that into consideration, but I think that we'll work through them. I don't, I don't see us coming to a point and saying, oh, by November, oh, we're, we're, we're at a standstill, and we're gonna close it down and rip it out and have people with pitchforks come in. I don't think that's gonna happen by any stretch. I think it's just making sure that everybody's in agreement on, you know, is this a perpetual agreement that we look at every year to make sure that nothing has changed? Or what, you know, what are the, the terms? I think it's, it needs to be, I have trouble with it being bounded, but I also need, but I also wanna make sure that both parties have the ability to, to change as things evolve with a certain amount of time of how long it would take to change or whatever. I mean, those are the kind of things. But the MOU, dumbbikes, Primex, with, with Brandy and Peter representing our boards, and then coming back to the whole bodies, we'll get there.
Sure. Thanks, Andy. All right, Peter.
One last thing, and I'll leave it, I'm sorry. Captain LeVake's here. He's listened to the council, he's listened to the school board. Obviously, he's a bright man. He recognizes our concerns, and while this process is going, I'm sure the police will give it the necessary attention as well.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move on before.
The gab, where's the gab?
Yeah, it's hanging on the wall in the town hall. Uh, next on the agenda was, uh, during our discussions over our joint meeting here, um, I don't recall, but somebody had come up with the idea, we're, we're in the beginning of, uh, working out our cable television franchise agreement. And so there was, I, there was a wondering on our part, I guess, the, of what the school district might be needing, if, if anything, when it comes to that agreement, if we can make it work into some beneficial, we'd like to do that. So I don't know.
Um, the first thing I would say is we heard about this this week as well. So, um, as far as, uh, what your agreement terms are, we definitely would like to have maybe a, a better, more thorough conversation. We're not gonna say we're fine, we're not gonna say we're not fine. Um, there's always, you know, more that can be done, that, you know, I did work in the cable industry for a while, so I know it's about the drops, the wires, the, and then the, the video service. So with that, um, I think we also had equipment involved, um, that when the, uh, when your department was held at the high school, when the separation happened, we got some equipment and you had some equipment. So I think there's a lot of, um, elements of the agreement where we had mutual benefit. And when we moved to town hall, um, your department moved to town hall, that, you know, there, I think the, um, the collaboration probably separated a little bit. So, um, I would say that it would be appropriate to give our administration time to go over, um, what rights come from that agreement, what, um, needs can be achieved in those agreements, and, um, where the school district, um, can, can give some feedback. But I don't wanna put them on the spot at this point.
Sure, no, absolutely.
To, uh, to come up with a, a great grandiose idea for you. But, uh, if you can give, um, if you can provide our administration a timeline of, of your renewal process, and when you might ha, need a needs assessment from us, I think that'd be great. And we do appreciate you extending the offer to, to collaborate on some things that might improve our facilities.
The agreement is in January, is it not?
Uh, renewal was up in January. We have open comment period from now until October tenth, uh, where we're, the council's taking input from the public. Um, we can extend that further for, for the school.
Thank you.
Um, but we would probably need it by mid to late October, the latest, because we'd have to start reviewing the agreement with the council and moving it forward to legal, and then negotiating in December. So wait, mid to late October.
Just, what's the term of the agreement? What's its, what's its reach? How long is this?
It's, uh, right now, the current agreement, it was, it was a ten-year agreement. Uh, we are up for discussion, that's part of the franchise agreement, where the council will be discussing how long they want this new agreement. Um, but this one was ten years, the one before that was a ten-year agreement.
So is it safe to say that we as a school district need to make sure that anything that we have planned upcoming, such as maybe a combined SAU sped building during the next few years, should be brought into the discussion?
We are looking, yes, but we're also looking at, uh, because, as you know, we might have a couple of buildings ourselves. So we're looking at putting in language that any future buildings, and will be included in this agreement, so that if, for instance, XYZ facility gets replaced, that it's underneath, it'll be covered underneath this agreement. There is some language that we are working on as well.
And then if they need anything, they can make contact with Nick, or?
They can make contact with Nick, or, or the town manager's office, or, um, basically, you know, myself, if they, on that.
We appreciate you extending the, the.
And if you would like Nick to come in front of you with a quick presentation, we'll make him available as well. Just let, just, uh, touch base with the media division about that, when you would like that presentation.
Thank you for the offer.
Is there anything further on this item? I see nothing. Upcoming budget considerations. Discussion to be held regarding the following upcoming budget considerations of capital projects and collective bargaining agreements. And I think this might have been errors?
It really was. Um, I think this is something, we don't always meet the same time of year. This might be something we wanna start doing and meeting the same time of, of year before we start going over budgets, because I find that we kinda work in silos. Other than catching up on YouTube when we have a free moment to see what the other body's doing, we don't have a lot of, um, opportunity to really talk before we start our budget, um, compilation hearings and, et cetera, you know, as we bring it to the public. Paul was tiptoed in and dropped his phone. So, but we're awake now. But, but with that, you know, just, we're asking the same end user for their support of our, of our budgets. And obviously, if we're running in silos, we're not seeing what the, the end impact is from each side of the table. So for that, you know, I wanted to kinda go over what we have going on, uh, for large items in our, um, in our upcoming fiscal year. And, um, with collective bargaining agreements, that creates a lot of warrant articles that talk about, you know, about, uh, staff and impacting staff. And we wanna make sure those contracts are communicated to the point where if, if they are good for the, good for the community, that they, they get passed, and it's not just the number takes over the, the conversation. So, uh, to that end, uh, from the school district's perspective, when it comes to collective bargaining agreements, we do have one coming up with our largest collective, um, group, which is our teachers' union, the MTA. And we will be going into negotiations in the next few weeks with them, with the expectation that an agreement will be achieved, and, um, it will go to the warrant in, um, in April, to be voted on in April. So, um, if, I don't know if you wanna go over your CBAs that are coming up?
Yes, um, what, this coming year, uh, our April, uh, town meeting is, uh, we have potentially five union contracts coming up uh, the next year out. There could be an additional, uh, union contract, one to three years out. Potential bonding, uh, the library, although I didn't know that was within the next three years. I think it was. They're, right, space needs on both the safety complex, um, uh, that we've started talking about and, and the library. Uh, sewer lines extensions are a possibility as well. Um, I do know that we have bridge projects coming up, and that's three to five years out.
We have one in, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, which would be the Route Three Pine and Berg Bridge. Uh, next year, construction for the Befford Road Bridge will begin. We already have all the money, that the, the twenty percent that the town will be paying has already been set aside in capital reserve funds. So we have that money. Unless there's a huge spike in steel and bridge costs and labor, you know, we'd have to take that into account twenty, to twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thank you. Peter.
Finley, I, I think also, and I heard earlier, uh, I think we're gonna hear in the budget season about the Pearson Road reconstruction.
Uh, yes, but once again, that's been saved for. That project, because of the projects that have been happening. Council Albert, that money has been kinda set aside a couple of years ago for that project. So we do have some of that money set, we have that money set aside.
I, I thought, I had discussion with, I guess, I had discussion with the town manager and the director of Public Works, and they left me with the impression that that road, which badly needs repair or reconstruction, is up this year. It's gonna come up for the following budget year.
Right, but what I'm saying is that we also have that money set aside already in our capital reserves.
Okay. All right, thanks, Paul. Thanks, Peter.
Okay, and when it comes to capital, and I'm probably gonna put Matt in the spot, because he does it in his sleep. Um, large projects we have, we definitely have some roofing. Um, we obviously have some paving, we have some drainage, um, paving and drainage at, uh, the Master Cola complex, which is upper elementary and elementary school. Uh, and obviously, when we do those projects, um, we've been very collaborative, and I think it's important for the public to know too, we collaborate with the town on those paving projects because we can get a shared reduced rate. Um, so we do pay our part, but we do pay it at the town rate and work with the town to, to collaborate on the projects so that they get done on time and within, uh, the most efficient cost that we can, we can procure. And we couldn't do that on our own, so the town's very, a very good partner for us, and thank you for that.
Yeah, this, if I may?
You, you may and should.
Okay, thank you.
You're better at this than I am.
No, I am not. Uh, this one thing I just wanna make, uh, both bo, boards aware at the same time, so you're hearing the same message. Uh, Tom Tussell, our facilities director, and Kyle Fox, your director of, uh, Public Works, if I have that title correct, do a tremendous job in working together in our paving projects. Kyle has much more buying power as far as asphalt, 'cause you guys pave roads. And us, just, uh, piggybacking onto his contract, we get the same per-ton cost that the town does. So that's a tremendous savings to us. We were able to, this summer, complete almost all of Thornton's Ferry, um, school. But we just, we're just gonna do the circle and the lower parking lot. It was the economies of scale, getting the better price, and the two of them work exceedingly well. And every time I've spoken with Kyle, he's been nothing but a tremendous asset to us and the school district. And we like to keep that, uh, relationship going. The thing that we have is the paving in the, the circle, the bowl, kind of, at Master Cola Elementary School, where you enter into the Smith Gym, that area. I'd also like to talk to Kyle about looking at Bishop Street, 'cause there seems to be, uh, some drainage issues there, and maybe we could kinda coordinate projects too. I went by at the last torrential downfall and, you know, saw the backup in the parking lots and, and where else it went. So it's, um, you know, a project that we look forward to, to working together on. So I'll be speaking with him, and I just wanted to let you guys know that you should be proud of, you know, your departments, your finance department. We share the same auditing firm, we share the same, um, capital assets firm that we're working with, Aquarius Capital. So we do a lot together. It doesn't appear that way, it's not publicly stated all the time, but we work together constantly. And I just appreciate them, and I hope they appreciate us a little bit. Thank you.
Absolutely. Hey, the paving thing, we've, you guys have made that connection probably about eight or ten years ago, didn't you? You know, it's worked well, I've heard, and it's glad, I'm glad to hear that. All right.
So did I miss any large?
You hit 'em all.
I did?
Yes, you did.
Wow, I guess it's not as bad as I thought it was.
Roofs.
I'll, I'll take the win on this one. Excellent. So, so with that, you know, as we're discussing our budgets coming forth, I think we're gonna have a lot of um, a lot of ticket items that, you know, we definitely want to, you know, leverage in our communication, so that we're really, you know, communicating effectively the things that we're doing to, to try to, you know, contain costs like we just talked about tonight, as we're presenting our budgets. Um, it's definitely important for us to say, you know, where there is economies of scale, we are one Meramec, and we, we take that opportunity. Um, Primex is an area where we, we are one Primex, but because of the type of businesses we take care of, we have two policies for the same risk pool. But we also, I think, as both bodies do a great job of containing costs there by, by trying to minimize risk. So, keeping our rates down. So, you know, I, I do think that we have a lot more in common than we do different. Um, so, the more that we can, I think, vet that publicly, I think it helps all of us, as we're communicating uh, to end users, because I think we get a lot of questions about town, you get a lot of questions about school. Um, the more we can really be um, what I would call collectively um, communicating, I think it's gonna be more beneficial for us to be able to stand as a unified table, as unified front like we are, to, to do what's best for Meramec and, and find those common grounds. So, this is a good way of having that exercise, and, and if we do this in future years, we'll really go into our budget season with, with an open eye, so.
I think it's gonna be a, a potentially a dicey budget season, um, with some things that have been, will be happening. Uh, um, the resource officer coming totally to the town now, and, and uh, and union contracts are gonna be a little bit of a hit. And so, it's gonna be a lot of work coming up, but, but thank you, I appreciate that, Shannon. Uh, nothing further on that?
Andy.
Andy, I'm sorry. I told you, just, you got the elbow, I'm throwing it out.
Just trying to be nice. It's, um, so, just, just one comment, and I don't know if we can achieve this, but being, being on the negotiating part for the school side this year for um, the, the teacher's contract, and, and also looking at the contracts that are usually come up for renewal on the town side, one of the things that'd be really good to have a conversation between both bodies is around healthcare. Because, I don't know about you guys, but it's probably the biggest part of our contract negotiations we have is around the healthcare. Not only the cost and the percentage contribution, but also the providers. I don't know whether this economy scales that, that the town, I mean, we have the larger body of uh,
People.
People.
Yeah, they're sort of employees.
Yes, I was trying to think, but the, the lar- the, the larger group of employees is through the school side. Um, and we, we, we achieve a lot of good economies of scale around healthcare and, and health provision and, and things like that. Um, I don't know whether it makes sense for the town to be able to, to work with us to potentially leverage to help on the town side, but it, it, it may not even work out, but it might be worth an initial conversation to see whether something can do.
Uh, Peter and Bill?
Andy, I'm, I'm in favor of researching that. Um, if we can get a better price on healthcare to, to save money, as well as maybe we, uh, and obviously, keep good healthcare for our employees, that, that's huge. And if, if that what you're going at?
Right, I mean, we, we, we shop around. I mean, the administration has a lot of experience in dealing with these larger healthcare scenarios, different, different plans of service. I mean, we've got a lot in, invested in it, and I think that there's an opportunity. I mean, if I put my taxpayer hat on, I mean, I try to do as good as I can for the school, but if we can pass and, and leverage some of that with the town side to pick up either a better carrier or better opportu- better cost rates or whatever, you know, that's.
I've thought about that, and I think, you know, and I'm not sure what it takes, and I'd probably go to Paul on that one, but um, you know, I'm in favor of that, if we can save money and still keep good quality healthcare.
Bill, thanks, Peter.
It's a great idea. The immediate thought that I have is that if you were to pull the employees of the school district with the employees of the town, you're actually creating a larger pool. So, the, potentially, your risk is gonna be coming, because there's a larger pool of employees, your risk would be coming down. Whether or not it's feasible.
Well, except that you also have higher-risk pool employees on the town side.
I understand this is a higher risk, but I, I understand that, but, 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 to me, I, I think that, that the bigger the number, I think the bigger the number, the, the better the potential the pool could be. So, I think it's, it's certainly worthy of having a conversation and looking at and see if it is feasible.
You guys? I think Matt and Paul can have a conversation and make our, make the boards aware of what's.
Matt's giving me this eyeball, I don't know if I'm gonna be risky walking to my car tonight or anything.
Cinder.
So, we have that cost care containment committee. I wonder if there's a way to leverage that and, as well, because it's.
Healthcare cost.
The healthcare cost containment, thank you.
H triple C.
So, I wonder if there's a way to leverage that, um, because there's a number of things that we've gotten out of that over the years.
Service shopping and those kind of things.
And what, there's even like, yeah, the service shopping, the incentives, right? If they choose one thing over the other, there's some things that we've made some good progress on that we could share too.
Alright, yeah, I think um, if it works for everybody, I think we'll have Matt and Paul have those general conversations, see if it might work, and they can let us know, because I'd be interested if.
No boxing gloves though.
Well, we'll have the HR directors there, so you behave yourselves.
Every time Paul talks about finance, guys getting together, whether it's a party, we, we just kind of get a kick out of it. We just can't imagine finance guy party, I don't know.
Well, you bring the HR, so that way they, they document everything, it's fine.
Yes. So, alright, yeah, so if you don't, if you could guys could look into that, that'd be great. Alright, thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda was an athletics fields discussion, and Tom Thornton and Pete had brought this up, and so, if Pete could, I'd like him to address those things.
Well, I know that last year, uh, we talked about this at this same meeting. Um, and uh, I'm on Parks and Rec, uh, and I, I really, we haven't, haven't done anything and moved forward on this particular issue. And doing our research and going back, we've still identified, and I have Rick Grenier here, Rick, sorry to put you on the spot for M Y A, uh, who's also on Parks and Rec, and they still have a need for at least a basketball court and uh, three or four fields. Is that what I understand, Rick? And if, and correct me if I'm wrong, on the school side, you need a varsity soccer field at least. So, I think there's still a need, and I'm not sure if we, you know, where we're going with this, should we continue to go with it? I, I think so. It sounds like there's a need and, and further research it. Um, I, I guess that's how I'll start this discussion off.
And I, if I can follow on that, at our last meeting in the minutes, you're gonna see that we talked about the appropriateness of taking the two thousand and ten fields needs assessment and just updating it for current usage and current enrollments. I think that's your first appropriate step. Uh, let's look at what ideas were there, what makes sense, what doesn't. Um, not only school district properties, which I know you're targeting right here, were considered, but also um, properties throughout the community, some of which are town-owned, some of which are um, are not town-owned. Um, and there are definitely tangible changes in that report, because I believe you no longer use um, the Anheuser-Busch facilities, and they were, it's still in current use at the time that report was written in two thousand and ten. But there was still a lot of short-term and long-term projections, um, need, uh, needs by sport. I think enrollments, if I, if I remember correctly, is it lacrosse girls? Lacrosse opened up quite a bit in the last eight years. So, that's boomed, and that's not even recognized. But I think the bones of the report with just fresh data will give us what we need to make a good uh, short-term and long-term strategy. And what I do remember from the conclusion of that report, because I was the board member assigned to that for uh, bringing it forward, was the thought of taking some of the properties and developing a batch using a bond. Um, at, at the time, it was two million dollars. And being able to develop a number of fields and a complex idea, um, with, with that in mind, knowing that we needed some short-term um, immediate relief then. And that was when we still had some of those facilities that we don't anymore. So, I think that if um, we just revisit it, whether you have a subcommittee or whether the Parks and Rec committee, I know Matt left, so we'll just put it all on him, because he can't defend himself. But uh, but to that, so we'll just give him all the chops. Uh, but to that end, I think that there's bones there that will give you what you need, refresh the data, and I think we'll have a, a good way to go into budgeting with, with a, with a sound short-term and long-term strategy, just like we do with capital improvement. So, that, I, I stick with that.
Hi, Shannon, Andy?
Thanks.
So, you know, we, we as a school board of, um, when Mike Thompson was here, talked about some of the opportunities on school and land that are out there. I mean, there's the Timmons property, which is out the end of South Pabusick, which is challenging, to say the least. We had Planning and Building do some looking and stuff, and it's not unusable, but it's probably relatively expensive to do things. There was also the opportunity between uh, Thornton's Ferry School and Continental Boulevard, there's some land that's there. It's a little less challenging, but there's wetlands involved, so we talked about that. But I think one of the things, and, and again, we haven't talked about this as a board, although it has been vetted at Planning and Building. And Finley, you can chime in, because you've been in these discussions. We've talked, and we've had in our, in our capital C I P for the school side, the turf field at high school. And there's been a lot of talk about how the whole town could benefit from having a turf field in terms of longevity, not only for school, but for additional things like that. Um, it's difficult for the school itself as an entity to, to look at this as a budgeted item, because it's over a million dollars to do this work. Um, within the, because we did, redid the tracks, and now it's gonna be done in the middle of the track. So, it would be good to have a conversation around what it means for the Meramec community as a whole to look at the turf field in terms of funding and other opportunities there. Because I think that that, while it doesn't solve everything, it takes a little bit of the load off of some of the um, some of the use. It, it, longer, you know, longer, you don't have to keep people off of it as long, you know, there's this opportunity there. So, I know we as a board have not talked about this, so I'm just tossing it out there at the risk of, of trying to be collaborative here. But I think from a town perspective, there's an opportunity for us to look at, at accelerating a turf field if we can figure out a creative way through sponsorships or, or fundraising programs or grants or something like that to do it. And I think it'd be good to have the town and the school collaborate to work on that.
Actually, Andy, when uh, the Planning and Building Committee, probably five years ago, maybe more, I can't remember, looked into it, the actual delta, the, the added costs from having a turf field versus maintaining the fields we currently have was twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, as I recall, which, a couple thousand dollars a month, I, I, it's an easier one to cover. The fin- the financing of it, that'd be nice if we could come up with something there. But as far as uh, the annual ex, cost in excess of what we currently experience, it wasn't a great difference.
But it's getting it there.
Right, but the thing is, the twenty-five thousand dollars can now be looked at in the way that fields are getting rented, so.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, when you think about it that way, it might, it might be a wash, again, revisiting the data with current, with current.
Numbers.
Numbers. I think you might have a different answer, it might be closer.
Yep, so, but anyhow, so, because I think in the long term, that would be a real benefit to the community, to the school district as well, because you wouldn't need an extra field for soccer, you could still use the same field and not destroy it.
But for the town and M Y A and other functions like that, I mean, it's, I mean, the good news is, is that the school invested in the track. And, and anybody that hasn't been down there, just the track and the seating, we've, we've got in our plans for, for this year. It's, yeah, we proved it, to redo the bleachers that are to the, to the.
Highway.
Highway side, thank you. So, they'll be more accessible, though they'll be of similar structure to the uh, to the ones that are on the other side. So, you're gonna have the infrastructure in place and the track and everything else. So, all it really needs is the field in the middle to, to sort of cap it off, and you've got a really good thing that Meramec can be even more proud of than they are today, so.
With increased usage?
Yes.
Because, yeah.
I mean, I think it's worth, I mean, I think we definitely need to look at it, and I think we need to start to take some action on it. Um, because as, for as long as I think I've been on this school board, we've had these similar conversations about the shortage of um, these kind of facilities in a way, an approach that we can look at that intelligently, as cost-effectively as possible. But, you know, just, you know, as it relates to the varsity soccer field, you know, we pay rent now to G P S, and then we have issues, um, safety issues, a matter of getting kids there um, to home, home games all the way in Bedford. Um, we're getting some complaints from, I've been getting some complaints from parents, most recently, as has Brandy, um, regarding um, those soccer fields and that transportation and how that works. And so, um, you know, we're finding across the board, when I was on Parks and Rec, we discussed it, you know, with the shortage. You know, I think um, there's definitely not enough facilities when you start to look at the M Y A. And, I mean, across the board, um, there's gotta be something that we can start to plan for. You know, what that is, I don't know, but I think Shannon's point about getting that data updated to start, that document updated, that was a foundation for making those types of decisions and is a good way to start. But, you know, we're definitely at a shortage, I think.
I know that the town has um, a couple of parcels that can be utilized. Um, there's a segment of Horse Hill Nature Preserve that was culled out. Um, I'm imagining the cost might be a little bit higher. It was relatively flat piece of land, um, but, but it's, it goes back into the, into the land a short distance, and it would be, the road would have to be, it'd have to be dealt with anyhow. There's also another parcel, um, I think it's six or seven acres down near the highway garage, that it was held as, that would, the council a number of years ago auctioned off a lot of properties that we owned. It weren't um, necessary to the town, they'd accumulate them over the years through planning board work and other ways. And so, we did get rid of quite a few smaller parcels, but kept that one, you know, the highway garage on purpose because of the fields that are currently there, and it would be a nice add-on. That, that's something we have to look at. It's a matter of, you know, finding the right timing to do those type of projects. Um, this current year, with what's coming up, doesn't seem like it's gonna be one of those good years. But, so, is there anything further on item number five? None, alright, I'll move.
Actually, I, I'm just gonna go back a little bit. Only because I think that was, I, when I talked to Eileen earlier in the week, so it's not about athletic fields, it was about school-owned property, and mentioned just that we also want to probably do some research if you are going to pursue a public safety facility, utilizing the property that we were talking about for the south fire station, which is school-owned, but we were, we were gonna consider, we would, we would deed it over for the fire station. Um, so if that needs more land, because you're doing more things with it, that we should probably look to, you know, maybe have some, not, not that we're gonna do it in this year, but we can start working on what your request should be, so that we're kind of going into it with open eyes to what you're looking for.
Well, part of the things, that's what the needs assessment is involved. Because that will determine what kind of facility we would need to propose, what size, which would have ramifications, but what you're talking about.
Right, because you, right now, we were looking at three acres, and you probably, um, I think Eileen tipped off that you might want a little more, just because of that.
Yes. Not significant, but low.
Yep.
The needs assessments will not be ready for this budget season.
Oh, you're good. But gives us time, and that's what we need.
Whenever it's ready.
Yeah, there is, it's not a project that is on the fast track by any stretch.
You bet. Okay.
Alright, thank you. Alright, see nothing further? Uh, approval of the minutes from our last joint session, November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Mister Chairman, move, approval of the joint meeting of the Meramec School Board, Meramec Town Council, November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, minutes with the following amendments. Line twelve, Jody Valencourt was not a member of the council, Peter Albert was, place Valencourt with Albert.
Aw, Peter, what?
Thank you, Councilor Boyd.
You're welcome, Councilor Albert. Of course, if, I can't say it. On page nine, line four hundred and eight, it reads, "Town Council Board suggested exploring the potential of developing the Mass River Road in state of New Hampshire parcels off Back River Road." The only parcels on Back River Road are the, the ones that are north of, Finley, is that Norm's place?
Transmission?
On, uh, Back River Road, is that?
Yeah, Norm's Transmission.
Norm's Transmission. So, this, this state property that, that is in there, that I had suggested that particular time could be potential athletic field sites. There's no such thing as Mass River Road. The only thing that came to mind, and you alluded to it earlier, was Turkey Hill Road. So, I don't know if we have the ability to go back and reflect what I, what I said back then, but I certainly would not have said Mass River Road, because it doesn't exist. But I want to say that I did identify two particular locations that we should consider. And on page ten, line four twenty-seven, there is currently four hundred thousand dollars in the land bank account, not four thousand.
How much is there?
Four hundred thousand, not four thousand. That's gonna be line four twenty-seven on page ten. Otherwise, that's all I had.
Is there a second?
No, there wasn't a second yet.
Okay. I'll second for the sake of seconding.
Motion by Councilor Boyd, second by Shannon.
There's another change.
Okay. Oh, what'd I miss?
On, on the bottom of page nine, line four twenty-one, it says, "The Director of Public Works, Casparius." I think he's the Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, good catch.
Thank you, Tom. Yes?
On page five, lines two eighteen and two nineteen, um, Board Member Guayumi reiterated her request for reimbursement for the water. for the water filtration in the schools by Saint Gobain and asked MVD to keep this in mind in their negotiations.
Any other further adjustments?
I know I wasn't there that night. I was not present for this meeting. I was dealing with family issues.
All right. Next, Paul.
Just ahead.
All right. I, okay, I've called the question on the amended motion.
amended minutes, yeah, as amended.
I was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to abstain only because I didn't read them. So, comments from the press, non-comment from the publics, no public, comments from the council. Peter.
I guess tonight, I think this is a great meeting and when I, when I see both governing bodies get together like this, it kind of, I envision possibly the future for Merrimack as a different form of town government to a city council form of government moving forward maybe in a few years. But I just look at it, I see this group of people getting together, handling the problems within the, basically, I want to say, two organizations, school and the town. But, you know, it just kind of makes me think about where, where we could be in five years or so and maybe the consideration of a town council, I mean, a city council form of government after much research, of course.
Thank you, Peter. Anything further from the council? Comments from the school board? Very good. And take a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by...
Hold right side of the table.
Nancy. Andy?
Pick one.
Andy. Andy Schneider. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. 10-0-0. Thank you, everybody.